Let's call to order the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors work session, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one via Zoom. Our first item for discussion is the Lotus Park Senior Living LLC. Now, do we all know why we're here tonight and what this is about? If not, Mr. Mack, would you like to explain what we're doing here tonight? You're on mute.
We, as I understand it, we're merely discussing a sketch plan and we're not making any decision. And in the future, all the things that were mentioned in Michelle's, the RVV letter would have to be addressed, so. That's as much as I understand what we're doing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Pretty spot on. Mr. Blackburn, I'll throw it over to you, and if you want to elaborate some more, why don't you enlighten us?
Yeah, good evening. Joe Blackburn from Whistler Pearlstein, happy to be here on behalf of Lotus Park Senior Living this evening. As Mr. Mack identified, we are here tonight for the consideration or preliminary review, not consideration of a sketch plan submission which has been made. Micah, do I have the ability to share my screen? I'm gonna just try and see what happens. The subject property, can everyone see my screen? Right, subject property is located with substantial frontage along the Newtown bypass. Also maintains nominal frontage along Lower Silver Lake Road. The property consists of just under five acres, is located in the OR Office Research zoning district. And as you can see from the aerial on your screen is presently vacant. In addition to the substantial hardships on the property from its unique configuration. Can we see the plan or are we still seeing the aerial?
It's still the aerial, Joe.
Yeah, all right, great. There we go. In addition to the unique configuration of the property, the property also is burdened by a water course which traverses the entire southern end of the property or southern side of the property. And I say water course intentionally because although it is classified technically as a stream, it is man or was a man-made stormwater outfall feature which over time has basically continuously eroded into a gully. But although it does meet today's technical standards under the ordinance for a quote unquote stream, it is in reality a man-made stormwater outfall structure, the significance of which we'll touch on briefly. Notwithstanding those numerous encumbrances, the applicant is proposing to improve the property with an approximately twenty-four thousand square foot footprint assisted living facility as generally depicted on the plan before you. That facility would contain fifty or a total of eighty-two beds, plus or minus fifty of which would be true assisted living, which adds separate and apart from a nursing home, again, which we'll talk, touch on briefly, and thirty-two memory care. I'm sure members of the board are familiar with or hopefully are familiar with the distinction between the nursing home and assisted living. We are not a nursing home, rather it is an assisted living facility offering the residents a little more freedoms and liberties with what they're doing. So notwithstanding that fact, again, eighty-two beds in total. The plan that you see before you is the latest in a long number of iterations of the plan that the applicant in the consult with its professional engineer, Arna Engineering, joining us tonight, have reached after meetings with the, among other bodies, the township's land use committee. Of significance for this iteration is the orientation of the building itself. In prior plan versions, we had the long end of the building, if you will, parallel to Newtown bypass at generally the same setback, maybe a little further. The recommendation of the committee was to reorientate that building so as to minimize the frontage along the Newtown bypass, which we understand is and will continue to be a talking point and a point of concern as hopefully this project moves forward. But under the current orientation, you'll see that the points of greatest encroachment are minimized to a few points. I would also, just for background purposes, on the plan here, you see this dash line. This would be the permissible building envelope with the application of the of all necessary setbacks. So we are working with effectively an unusable building lot, which generates the need for a number of items of relief, which we've identified and which both Leana and Michelle have confirmed as being necessary in their various reviews. I really don't think that their reviews are gonna be useful for tonight's discussion because, as I said, we're really just looking at this from a thirty thousand square foot level and seeing if there's something worth further exploration. So we agree with everything in there. As Mr. Mack said, yes, we're gonna have to address all those comments, but that's for a time in the future. I would also add that we feel strongly that this proposal is really the best of all worlds for the use of what is otherwise a very encumbered property. It is extremely low impact with respect to traffic, with respect to need for township emergency services, and with respect to obviously the schools, which it will have zero impact on. And at the same time, it provides a tremendous ratable for the township with, which is on what is otherwise currently a vacant property. There would be created as a part of this project over fifty full-time employment positions, thirty of which would be skilled nursing positions, all of which would pay EIT. And there are also a slew of other ad hoc physical therapy, cognitive therapy, occupational therapy, and you know, doctor medical professionals that would be brought in again on an as-needed basis. So it's a candidly about as minimal of an impact use as you can get with respect to things like traffic and emergency services, while also providing what we think is a fair, fairly, fair number of good jobs for the township, which I know has been something of concern of late. So fifteen individual shifts, or excuse me, fifteen employee shifts. So again, we're not talking about a huge traffic generator. Obviously, the memory care patients hopefully goes without saying, but I'll say it anyways, they're not driving anywhere. And the assisted living patients similarly, some of them have cars in other locations, but it's a few and far between, such that the applicant is confident that the, in fact, the thirty-two spaces located on its own property would in fact be sufficient for its uses. We are showing an additional ninety-four spaces on the PICO property, which is something that PICO has historically permitted crossings and at-grade parking. We're hopeful that we don't even need it. Maybe, you know, that's something we can work out where it's held, held in reserve if, you know, only constructed as needed. But again, that's well down the road. So again, purpose of tonight is really just to explore the use, see if there is a desire or an appetite to, you know, explore it a little further, to actually do a little deeper dive on an engineering side. We have been cognizant, as I said, of the impacts, perceived impacts to the bypass. There is a substantial burned buffer there now, which would obviously be enhanced. And we've, you know, be happy to, you know, show some architecturals if need be when the time is right as well. So with that, I am joined this evening by, as I said, by Anam Bot from Arna Engineering, the project engineer, as well as Mr. Montu Patel, Mr. Sergeant Patel, the principals of the applicant. And I'm happy to make myself or any of the project professionals available to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you. Before we ask questions, I'll just ask Mr. Shankman, just so that we don't get deep into the weeds here, what, what questions should we be asking, what type of questions before, you know, we start to either get too far into it or start picking it apart too much?
I think you stay at the level of the use primarily. Is this the kind of use you want in that location? I think that there hasn't been fully engineered, you don't have any architecturials or other, you know, detailed plans to look at. If you go through all these variants and waivers, obviously the building won't, can't be done in that little triangle. So primarily, look at the use, look at its location, look at the other uses in the area, see if they're compatible. Those kinds of questions. And whatever is, whatever concerns you have, that may not be questions, are also fair game for this discussion.
I would agree with all that and happy to answer any of that. Thanks, Jerry.
You're welcome. Why don't we start with John? Go ahead, when we go around the horn here.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of, lot of variances required and, you know, hearing a lot from residents that, you know, we should stick to what the zoning is, but I understand that, you know, we have to be flexible, but, you know, I was gonna ask about that huge parking lot under the power lines there. So I think you answered that. It's not something that may even be needed. But a curious thing about this was a shared driveway with, let's pitch it on there as Wawa. We don't have a Wawa application in front of us at the moment, so. How does that happen?
You can feel free to remove those buildings if you'd like from, you know, your purview. Those are not germane, obviously. I think it's probably just a product of getting Bowler's Plan of survey for that lot and it already had those buildings conceptually sketched, so irrelevant.
Yeah, I mean, how, how does you get in and out of the property there? I guess if it weren't something like that, you'd have to go into that property no matter what. Was there, whether it was a Wawa or something else?
Well, the, at the end of the day, yes, there are other alternatives, but neither of them are feasible or desirable. One of them, obviously, we could access our frontage on Lower Silver Lake, but that would require a stream crossing, which it would be a permitting and regulatory nightmare that we obviously want to avoid. And probably the only thing that would be a greater permitting or regulatory nightmare would be trying to get something on the bypass directly. So to your point, there are those two options, but they're not feasible. So yes, access to this lot and whether it ultimately joins in there or, you know, if the projects don't sync up and we just gotta drop right down. This is obviously just in an attempt to minimize disturbances, minimize impervious, minimize tree, you know, removal. But yes, there, the access to Lower Silver Lake would absolutely need to be on that northern lot.
Yeah, because I don't know, I mean, we were discussing at one point, Wawa coming into that area there. And I'm not quite sure where that driveway is, or what we had been talking about in terms of, you know, water runoff and that sort of thing. So I don't know. You know, does this complicate to go into somebody else's property? I never, I never seen anything like this before where, you know, you have two different properties, two different projects to approve or not approve, and one depends upon the other sort of.
Well, they don't depend upon each other. That's, like I said, I mean, this would be feasible, even if this is, I would encourage you to, and I'm putting my hand over my screen, which I realize you can't see, but ignore the Wawa, that is, and Anan, you can probably confirm or clarify this. I'm sure you just got that from Bowler as a result of the fact that they've done the surveying on the neighboring properties. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it's really entirely conceptual and nature connection, which is not required at all. I think it makes sense to minimize the number of curb cuts on Lower Silver Lake. So to the extent we can do that, it makes sense. But they, the projects are in no way, shape or form contingent or in any way tethered or connected to one another with respect to their improvements.
Well, you know. If I may, but it's fair to ask hypothetical questions if you seem it, seem appropriate. It could work to be Wawa or anything else. What would, what, what would change and what would work, what would, what, what would not work? Because at some point, there may be something on that lot where Wawa has been focusing its attention.
And I think this is probably my fault. I, this hopefully will resolve any of the issues. The applicant owns both properties, right? So they can reserve whatever easements they need over the Wawa property or that property regardless of who they ultimately sell it to. So it's not an issue where the access to this property, to our property, the triangular property will be preserved. We have the unilateral ability to do that, and I can assure you that we will do that before any sale of that northern property is effectuated.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. That's important.
Yeah.
The other thing you did mention about the employees, I know that we'd like to have more highly skilled employees, but my impression was nursing home employees are not that well paid. I may be wrong in that assumption. So describe, I mean, is this a medical, it's not really a medical facility, it's more of a, it's not a nursing home, it's a.
It's not a nursing home, and I attempted to draw that distinction at the outset. The nursing home is separate and distinct from assisted living entirely. So I would, I know it seems logical that they're probably synonyms, but they're not. The skilled nursing that is required for the memory care and the other assisted living component of this use are, well, they're skilled nurses. So or they're, you know, classified as skilled nurses as separate and distinct from nursing home. I can't tell you what they're paid. I don't know their salaries, but I know that, you know, it's a medical. I would classify it principally, and maybe Montu, you can clarify or correct me if you disagree, but I would classify it principally as a medical use with obviously a residential component because the people are, you know, residing there. Montu or Sergeant, if you disagree with that, you should feel free to clarify or, you know, correct me.
Yeah, any clarification, be welcome. I know that Chandler Hall, for example, has expanded because it has multiple uses. As people get older, they're gonna need different kinds of care. So what I mean is this, you're talking about memory, talking about people with, older people like me with dementia, that kind of thing. If you want to call it that, is that what you mean by memory care?
Yeah, memory care would be include dementia care. Montu, can you hear me?
Am I unmuted now?
Yeah, you're unmuted now.
Thank you. And Sergeant Patel is also here. And if you wouldn't mind just unmuting him, we both represent Lotus Park Senior Living, and we both own a community down in Douglasville, Georgia, and are building another one in Kennesaw, Georgia. And you can, you can go to oakseanierliving.com and see what we build. And I think you'll find that it's a place where seniors who have the challenge of caring for themselves in an at-home environment come to because they have problems with mobility and need some assistance. They have problems with medication management. They have problems maybe using the restroom, bathing by themselves, eating by themselves. And this is a community where people come to enjoy other community members. And on the assisted living side, we'll have fifty residents on that side, and that will be a community that is lively. It is a community that will have some physical therapy associated with it. And it'll also have the ability to congregate and sing karaoke, play cards. Arts and crafts will have a pool table, ski ball, a putting green. There's, there's a number of things that'll be inside that building to ensure that the folks that come there to live genuinely enjoy their life, and we make their life a better place because they chose to come to stay at our community.
Now, if I can interrupt just briefly, Montu, because you used the word community a couple of times. Is it also fair to assume that the residents of this community are anticipated to be from this area? This is, you've identified this as an underserved area with respect to this use, something that would allow your residents to age, continue to age in place in the community, which they've, you know, lived in for, you know, some time?
Yeah, so there's an incredibly high limit demand in this area. And so the folks that need this kind of a care unfortunately have to go quite far today to find something. This community in the Bucks County area specifically in Newtown Township is dramatically underserved for the aging population. And as a result of that, folks have to move further away, and it's a challenge for them. Because I'm in this business, I get questions about where folks can go who have memory care, who have dementia, where there's not a waiting list. And this is the kind of thing where there's a waiting list that's quite, quite long.
So I mean, I assume you've done research to back that up. I know there are a number of assisted living and other homes in Newtown. Quite a few of them, I thought.
There's one, and it's called. The Birch's is in Newtown, but other than that, I'm not aware of another assisted living community with memory care.
Yeah.
Chandler Hall have that.
I don't, Chandler Hall does not have memory care.
What's the other one? Pickering Manor or?
Well, even if Pickering, I'm trying to think when we did that expansion.
Recently expanded and.
To create fifteen.
Competition with them.
To create fifteen, I think, memory care, which are probably still in the final throes of completion. But to.
I may, go ahead, Montu. Danner is a nursing home, I believe.
Correct.
And when a nursing home adds on with another component, it's run very differently, and the lifestyle of the residents that live inside the community is incredibly different. This is a place where someone comes to enjoy their life. They're not connected to any machines. You know, there is no ventilator, there's not a hospital bed to be found. You move in with your own furniture. It's dramatically different than a nursing home.
Well, then we have the other one on Lower Dollington, right by where either Quaker Village, it's, what's that called there? I think that's similar.
Family, yeah.
So I mean, I guess you've done it. So these people though, in your facility there, they're not like transient with the cars, driving in and out coming to town to shop or anything like that. Is that correct?
We will have a shuttle, and that shuttle will provide the services that they need. So when they need to go visit their doctor, we will take them via shuttle. When they want to come into downtown Newtown and walk around as a group, they will do that in the shuttle. So most of the folks will not drive a car on their own on the assisted living side. On the memory care side, you are not allowed to. You're not allowed to leave the memory care side.
And then to address Mr. Max, one concern about the pay of these employees that we have, are most of them are LPNs or RNs depending on our needs that we have. And you can just take a poll of just your RNs in the area at a hospital or anything else, and that's what we will be paying them, an LPN as well. But those would main people, and then we have some medical assistance that'll help as well. It's gonna mainly concern, consist of RNs and LPNs.
Okay, thank you. All right, pass on to anybody else that has questions.
You know, there's one other piece that we would have that the other places that you mentioned would not have, and that's a lifestyle director. We have both a lifestyle director that will employ on the assisted living side and one on the memory care side. And that's to ensure that there's activities that are going on, and there's a lot of fun that happens inside of the community.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Let me get my microphone. So I had the, had the same question as John about access, so I won't ask that again. Let me just take a little bit of time about the staff coming in. And I don't know who can answer this, but the staff would be visiting like OT or PT. Would they, or maybe a doctor that pays a visit, would they be paying EIT for the hours that they spend in Newtown? Is that broken out anyway like that?
I think that would, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but I would guess that they would, it would depend on where their employer is located, because again, they're, they're providing those services. They're, they're probably employed maybe at, you know, St. Mary's or, you know, Capital or some other medical provider. So to the extent that they, it's a good, I don't know the answer to that, Dennis. I can, I can try to hunt that down for you.
I thought it might be connected to where they were employed out of. But okay, then the other question I had, I actually have a couple more. In terms of the character of the area, and I noticed that you, the plans call for it to be over fifty feet, over fifty feet in height.
That's actually a typo. I apologize. The little arrow or carrot got stuck the wrong way. It is under fifty feet. We did identify that in Michelle's review letter. Had a brief moment of panic this morning on our team call, and Mr. Bot quickly fell on the sword for that one and identified that that's inaccurate, and it would, it will be in compliance with the fifty, fifty foot, fifty foot height minimum or maximum, excuse me.
Okay, I was gonna ask, if we knew what LaSalle was, but okay, don't need that. Going back to the plan, there's a lot of, I mean, the, there's, and the review letters mentioned several times about riparian disturbance or pipelines going across a riparian area, the water, waterway. How's that, is that, is that a?
So that, all those, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dennis. I'm sorry.
Is that something that's, you know, regularly done, putting piping across a riparian area? And how do we protect any kind of sanitary sewer, any, if there was a leak, any contamination?
I'll defer the second and third part of that to Anad, but just so we're clear, this is the limited area where that, that pipe would be. You have an existing culvert here, channeling the stormwater. Again, this is entirely man-made stormwater runoff, and we would be directionally boring beneath it, I believe, is the plan. Anan, you can clarify that, and you can also, I mean, to, I guess to your, to your second part though, Dennis, does it happen? Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if you could never cross a water course, I mean, there'd be, there'd be nothing going anywhere because there's, you know, streams all over the place. But Anan, maybe you can add a little additional flavor for what the permitting and regulatory requirements for that are, because it's certainly far outside of just the township's purview to review and permit that, correct?
Sure. Again, Anan Bot, I'm still engineer for the applicant here. And as Joe had mentioned, that we are crossing the riparian zone for the, for the, for the sewer sepp line connection only because existing sanitary line exists on the other side of the creek. So for this property to get connected to the sewer line, that would be the only way to connect. And where we are crossing is the least disturbed or least wide area of riparian zone, which we can disturb and connecting into that location. If you, if you were to go closer to Lower Silver Lake Road, it'd be much wider disturbance, much bigger disturbance compared to where we are trying to cross. So and that is the reason, so sewer line goes on the, I should, southern side of the creek where property, the buildings are located, building is located on the northern side. So hence, we are, the disturbance is the least possible required disturbance we need for connection.
And Anan, what's the, I'm assuming you're gonna directionally bore that? I know, if, if you know, I mean, that would be the expectation, right?
Yeah, again, that would be the expectation. However, Joe, the location of that manhole which we are connecting into is in the, within the riparian zone. So to, I think if you look at Joe, I think you're pointing the little higher location. There is, if you go further south, keep going down a little bit, yeah, no, you keep going down. If you move your hand, again, I cannot draw that, but see that line, which is like a yellow line, no, not that far.
Sorry.
I, if you go up, sorry.
Well, suffice it to say, it's over here, right? The manhole is on the other side and.
Other side, and you can, yeah, right there, just hold there, right there. Do you see that yellow line going towards the building? That's the, that's the sanitary line. That's it. So that, it itself, the manhole itself is located within riparian zone. So that will have to disturb that portion, but we will have to restore it to a national state, and we certainly need regulations which we need to follow with and get permission from state as well to go through that area, which also has metal inside it. But that's the minimal disturbance we will need to make to make the connection.
And since it's a man-made stream, for want of a better term, a mainstream, we project that a hundred-year storm, I mean, we get a lot, we're having a lot of hundred-year storms right these days. We don't foresee a flooding effect that would affect the building?
No, we. No, we, again, this stream is not mapped by FEMA itself. Uh, however, the, there was a flood study prior flood study done for this property and the lot, the blue line which Joe is pointing out, that's the flood plain line. So building is further away from the flood plain line.
Yeah, so we're certainly out of the flood plain, that's for sure.
I think that's what I had for now. Thank you.
Yep.
I'll, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, David.
Blackburn, um, good evening, good evening. The, you, you referenced that our, one of the gentleman that represents the uh the applicant, we've got LPNs and RNs and we can't designate which of them will be full time. Is that accurate or do we know that and and do we know if these individuals will be full time?
They are full time.
Okay, and how many of them?
It depends on the shift. Um, it then it also depends on your state requirements of how many you need on a certain time. Here in Georgia, it's a little different. Uh, we have LPNs and RNs. Um, and it's an equal amount of LPNs and RNs that we have.
But all right, so Georgia is different, but Pennsylvania, have you researched along Pennsylvania? How much would we need here?
So currently our uh operator is doing that currently right now. Um, as we were going through this process, we haven't even got to that hurdle yet, but our operator has been researching that and understanding the state requirements.
Okay, only reason why I ask that is because I'm very, very interested in what the economic capabilities are for our township. Um, and that would be very helpful in determining what makes sense. Um, especially if you have registered nurses or who or however, or practitioners or however they're gonna be and how many will be on staff. And what the, well, let me ask you this, what is the, what is the timeframe of a shift? Is it twelve hours? It's eight hours?
Eight hours, eight hours.
Okay.
And this would be a right from a salary perspective, it's not only RNs and LPNs, right? So what Monta mentioned earlier, uh to give you an example of an executive director that we would usually pay around a hundred and twenty, and that's down here in Georgia. So I'm sure in Pennsylvania, maybe a little higher. And then if you go further along that, we have what we call lifestyle directors. Uh, we have community relations directors and those are about sixty five, seventy thousand a piece as well, maybe a little higher in Pennsylvania. And then you go a little further beyond that. We have a food service director who is our chef. Um, and they have our maintenance director as well. And these are all um no hourly paying jobs, but they're salary paying jobs. Um, that's going to go north of fifty thousand.
So that's about five people, six.
So that's.
Directors.
So the idea of assisted living is that that's only for assisted living. So you have the, you have it on the uh memory care side as well.
Okay.
For the memory care side, we have extra nurses on that side because they need more care.
Sure.
People that are gonna be in memory care side will be nurses.
Okay. Okay. And I think probably what will make sense, uh assuming that, you know, we we move forward here, given the, you know, attention and and deservedly so of of the economic impacts is, I think the applicant would be probably well served to do an econ, an economic impact analysis um for what this would have uh on the, what impact this would have on the township from both a, both a a revenue as well as a cost standpoint, because like we said, we think it's kind of a combination of those two. Not only are are the the revenues gonna be high for the township, but the costs associated with, you know, securing those are gonna be low because we're not gonna have, you know, high demand, high traffic, uh high, you know, emergency services, things like that. So I think it probably makes sense for us to kind of map that out. And again, as a, as a part of a full land development application, uh assuming we get kind of the comfort tonight, that would be something that would be reasonably expected and I think would probably have no issue uh putting together. Well, I, I, I'm, I, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Blackburn, and I'm sure that would be fine. Um, I have uh one last question in terms of the whole sector, in terms of assisted living and so forth. Um, yeah, Mr. Patel, you mentioned that you see this to be a need or demand. Uh, I have a question in terms of um, what do you think will happen in the next five to ten years? Because I've, I've sat through some reports and presentations on individuals basically changing the way their house is laid out, adding elevators in their home to get that level of comfort in their home rather going to moving out of their home that they've been in for thirty years to go into something smaller. Um, and I'm curious about that because if there's a need or demand right now, that doesn't mean the need or demand will be there in the next five to ten years. So what does that do for us?
That's, that's a great question, Mr. Oxley, and then I'll let Mont to speak to it as well, just a little bit. What you're mentioning is what we're seeing through COVID. We saw a lot of people who wanted to age in place and wanted to not move out uh because of, and there's a big dis, big difference between nursing home and what we saw in skilled nursing and all these different places in assisted living. To give you a really good example, in our assisted living in Georgia that we had, we had zero cases of COVID, right? If you go to skilled nursing or if you go to a nursing home, it was very different. Now, going back to what you were saying, will this be necessary as we go forward? In our world of what we call a senior living, it's called a silver tsunami. The average resident that comes into our, our communities are age eighty to eighty-two, okay? If you just take that number and just take numbers as a fact, every day, ten thousand baby boomers retire every day. And the average age of the baby boomer currently is about seventy-seven, seventy-eight. So as you see this, the silver tsunami is coming and a lot more, there's not enough supply for the demand that's going to be out there right now. And that's where you're seeing new developments happening currently as well. To give you just one more aspect of this, two thirds of the assisted living that are out there were built before uh nineteen ninety-five. So what you're seeing is a very different, what Monta had mentioned earlier, more vibrant these versus your hospital segments. So that's what we're creating, more of a functional. The residents don't stay in their rooms. They actually stay in the common areas, which helps their minds, helps them interact with other people and nourishes their food and with food and also their mind as well. But Mont, if you want to add on, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Oxley, I'd, I'd like to attempt to answer your question a little bit differently than Sergeant. Um, while we are looking at building cottages uh that somebody could possibly have an elevator if they want to opt in and buy into that model down in Georgia. That's when you're independent enough to live on your own. This assisted living community and memory care is when you're no longer able to live on your own independently. And you may have a home healthcare provider in Newtown that comes and visits your home. This is when you're past that and you require somebody in the middle of the night to just come check on you and make sure you're okay. And that is the service and that's the level of care that cannot be found at home. And so five to ten years from now, what's gonna happen is this Lotus Park project that will hopefully be approved in Newtown uh will probably be one of a couple of others that will be approved in the lower Bucks County area to meet the demand of the aging population uh that will occur in Newtown. Um, and the surrounding townships, it's, it's just basic math with, as the population ages and lives longer that they will need this type of care. And.
I apologize, go ahead.
Sorry, but. And 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 today you have so much unmet demand that our supply in lower Bucks is starting at such a low point that I think you'll see a number of new developments in the assisted living space occur over time.
Absolutely. I, I agree with both of you gentlemen about the aging population and the need for care. Um, but I, I've seen a shift in certain folks' uh thought process about how their their loved ones will be taken care of. But the memory care thing is something that I, I will ask you. Um, you said the level of care, once you get to the memory, the memory situation is something that, you know, you might have to go to Lotus for. Now, we talked about, you know, certain level of employees on the living assistant side, but let's talk about how many employees on the memory care side, because you brought something up. You said checking on those folks that are in the memory care side often to make sure they're okay. Because there's dementia, there's Alzheimer's, all these different things. How many employees are gonna be on the memory care side?
It'll be a minimum of eight to one uh for every eight residents that we have. There'll be a minimum of one at all times. And so during the daytime, while folks are active, there'll be more than that. And then in the evening time, uh when they're helping to feed the residents, uh it'll start to go down and then it'll, in the evening time, you'll probably have two to three people uh in the community.
And just if I can clarify though, Monty, that's with respect to the ner, the the skilled nursing. Uh, I think Mr. Ox's question is maybe on a, on a global scale, taking into consideration those lifestyle directors and things of that nature. And correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Ms. Roxy, but is that, you know, you're looking for a kind of an all in number on both the assisted living versus memory care with you know, food service, lifestyle, nursing and all that? I, I was more or less uh referring to the memory care, uh Mr. Blackburn, but uh if you have that number in total, I'll take that as well, because I, no one's been able to tell me what the full number is yet.
So in total, it'll be around fifty-two full-time employees.
For the whole site.
For the whole site, that's.
That's directors, nurses, food service, everybody, right?
That's correct. Now, if you have a high level of care needed, then it may be a little bit more than that.
And of that fifty-two, on a given day, how many would you say are dedicated to the memory care portion?
Fourteen.
Okay, so the balance, whatever that, I'm not, I'm a lawyer because I don't do math, so um the balance is.
Thirty-eight, Joe.
There you go. Uh, but, okay, um, I think I'm gonna pass, pass off to um my next colleague. Um, because I uh, I've got all I need for now, but thank you.
Great.
Good, um. This is the same property that years ago was intended to have a hotel on, is that correct?
I believe that's true.
Are you the same, same owners, I'm assuming, uh, that wanted to put the uh hotel on that property at that time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, uh, I was on the board at that time, but I don't, I don't recollect uh why it didn't get done, but or if it was uh to feed it for any particular purpose, but can, can you tell me why you didn't proceed with that?
From an economic uh impact perspective, along that corridor at that time, there were other properties that were being built, other hotels that were being built. And so that project at that time seemed as though the Hampton Inn was covering that unmet demand. Um, and I even looked at that property um and possibly trading on it. So I was, I was very familiar with what the occupancies and the levels were at that time um for the transient lodging space.
And uh you don't remember the issue of the high tension wires ever coming into effect?
No, sir.
Okay, I do. Um, I just think that I'm looking at this from a safety perspective. Uh, one, I don't know why you would want to place any kind of uh elderly, uh whether they're assisted living, dementia or or whatever you want to call it in the vicinity of high tension wires, which is, as we know, been proven to be unhealthy uh and cause additional damage to to people. Or else we would build homes on the run, uh on their high tension wires, which we're not doing, of course. The other thing is, um, being that it shares that driveway with whoever it may be. Um, and I don't, I don't know which area of that building you would have the uh dementia unit. Are you gonna have a fenced in facility so someone maybe with dementia doesn't, just for lack of a better term, escape and may head out towards that driveway, which if there is going to be a wah-wah or whatever there, which is gonna be a trafficked area, may cause them harm from walking out of that, uh out of your building.
So I, I'll just mention real quick, I'll let Mont to jump in. What we use in, and we, we understand dementia very well. Um, they're wanderers. Um, we use state-of-the-art technology from a security perspective, not only from a camera, but from what we call a nurse call system and the doors lock at a certain point. We have mag locks and we have sirens and all of our employees that are watching them, LPNs, RNs, MAs, whoever, they carry on an iPad with them or, I mean iPhone. So when that alert goes off, everyone knows. So we understand what you're mentioning about wanderers and that's what dementia residents usually do, is they'll wander and try to get out. But we, it's a, it's, number one, it's monitored and it's secured hundred percent, because we understand that.
And just to piggyback on that, Mr. Clabro, the, there, there's no entrance that opens without a keypad uh that has a code to it. Only in the event that somebody pulls a fire alarm would doors unlock.
Well, yeah, okay, I, I understand that, but we all know that uh some people with dementia are very smart also, and their key thing, I hate to say, is to escape. And uh they may be the one pulling that the fire alarm just to get out. And I, I just want to make sure that if they were to get out, there is some sort of security measure. Is there going to be some sort of gate where, where the workers come in and maybe access it with the off, the off of a pad and put a number in and it, and it opens up and, and they can get in that way. Uh, visitors may have access with a card. I, I, I just think you're, you're close to a business that is going to have cars going in and out of it, whether it's for gas or to get food or whatever. And that, that's assuming that, that the wah-wah go, wah-wah is there. But also you're close to the bypass. And all it has to happen is one person to wander out, and that's one person too many. Um, that wanders out onto the bypass, God forbid gets hit by, by a car, just wanders out and just keeps walking around. That, that's gonna be a, a big hindrance for you, for the police, for, for everyone involved trying to get this person back into the facility. Um, so I mean, I, I, I guess my question is, are you gonna have a gated area?
Yes. So in terms of outdoor recreating, there will be a fenced in area. Uh, but in terms of the community that the memory care residents in are inside, it is completely locked and secure. Uh, you are unable to leave if you are a memory care resident. And if you're an employee and you know a code to get out, only then could you get out. And in terms of guests and other folks coming into the building, everyone comes in through the front door. Uh, their information is taken by the receptionist. And if you don't qualify to be into that community, you do not get in. It's the only way to come in and out.
Well, again, are they gonna be coming into a fenced area?
Yeah, you, uh, when you say a fenced area, you're, you're talking about the doors that open and close?
No, I'm talking about a fence that fences off the property. And if they were to come in, since they are a relative of someone, either they would have a card that goes into a keypad and they could get in or they call ahead and somebody gives them a, a code to get in.
Oh, I see.
The, the driveway will be open.
Yes.
What you're telling me. And that open can cause people to walk down the driveway. That, that's all I'm saying. Even if it's not a person with dementia, even if it's a person that's, that's uh assisted living and just happens to get out and just happens to walk down that driveway and wanders. What's, what's the safety aspect of, of securing that person and, and keeping them safe from not going out onto the highway?
So we, we know where our residents are. They wear something on them, so we know where they're at. And we have redundant devices uh throughout the building and outside to ensure we know where they're located. That's part of our formula.
Okay. Doesn't quite answer my question, but that's fine.
If you're looking for a fence along the bypass, we can, we can.
I'm not talking along the bypass. I'm talking a fence where the, where the driveway is, where there's an access point, which would go around probably the, some of the area, maybe up to the bypass. But I'm not looking for a fence across the bike. You're gonna have, you're gonna have a, uh, enough berm there and, and, and shrubbery that uh someone would have to jump over that. And I'm anticipating that to happen. My, my concern is somebody walking down that driveway, which the driveway leads to another high uh trafficked area, being whatever it may be. Um, and, you know, I wouldn't want to see anybody get hit by a car because they're walking down that driveway. But we, we, I, I don't want to, I don't want to uh beat this to death. Um, the other thing, uh, I'm assuming that you're gonna hook up to the uh, the sewer, city sewer and so on, correct?
Yeah, that's the, the, the genesis for, I think, three of the items of relief is the disturbance we need in the riparian area to be able to do that, yeah.
Right. Now, now that, down at that end, I saw. Right. Now, now that down at that end, I saw that you were you were pointing out that, uh, I guess the uh, the sewer piping would go under the water or above the water?
Uh, it would be directly bored beneath the 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 water course, so you you dig a hole in the ground and then you start going sideways such that it will be underneath the water.
Now, you don't anticipate this being a major uh, imposition for the sewer authority to do such a thing and or if there were some sort of break in the piping, uh, contaminating the waterway, how would the sewer authority best get to this in ample time to secure it so that it doesn't contaminate most of that water, waterway going, uh, that stream going downwards?
Uh, I'll defer to Anand, I know we've had some conversations, preliminary conversations with uh, with the authority. Um, so uh, Anand, if you can point on those conversations and what what if anything Warren or anybody at the authority has indicated?
Again, typically when you uh, go underneath the water, uh, there, most of these pipes are very in their watertight as well as their DIP pipe, so the the breaks are very few and far between. However, uh, there is an easement access from the Lower Silver Lake Road for for the sewer authority, for them to access along this uh, from Lower Silver Lake Road to access that line, if there were to be any break in the line itself.
It won't be a simple repair, I mean, it wouldn't be a simple uh, thing that the the sewer authority could get to. Uh, I I know you're saying that, I know we have great pipes and so and so on, but uh, but things do happen. And and if they were to happen in that situation, it would cause a a a major issue for the sewer authority to come in and to repair that particular area, not only that, but the contamination of that that small stream. And and the imposition on the uh, the elderly that may live there, you're talking about eighty two, um, eighty two beds, is that, is that correct? Does that mean eighty two EDUs are gonna be needed for that particular property or? Uh, Mr. Shankman, would you know, I know that you're you're a sewer authority person?
I don't know how many EDUs would be necessary until they do the calculations. It's not, it's not one per person, no, it's like one per household normally. So it's a calculation that goes into that. But we will also be aware that uh, there is another manhole and sewer connection on um, Lower Upper Silver, Lower Silver Lake Road, that is also capable of being being utilized as the primary attachment point to this wastewater runoff that's gonna be happening. So they don't really need to go under the under under that water course. Yes, it is a bit a bit longer than the preferred way, but it would not require any disturbance of the water course, which might be ultimately in the long run run safer and ultimately less expensive than doing it the way they wish to do it. Although I do understand that there is consideration for how much disturbance, but disturbance isn't the only issue. Safety is a bigger issue.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Shankman, one quick question, would that be going through a Pico property?
I don't think so. I have to, you have to take a look and see where the manhole is, but I think that there's a, there's a way you can do it without touching the Pico property.
Well, I I told me you did look at that, unfortunately, there were the the only manholes which are located is on the other side of the stream. Uh, if whatever the frontage we have along Lower Silver Lake Road, that's.
I would suggest, uh, when you do talk to the sewer authority, uh, you go out, go out to the site with uh, with the director or one of their people and really scout it more thoroughly than you have.
Yeah, again, you can see.
But uh, we we can certainly look into it, um, Ms. Shankman, but I just just to be clear, there's there's no way to get to Lower Silver Lake without crossing either the water course or the Pico property. I mean, that's there, you can see it right here, there's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right. You do have to cross the Pico property. I'm sorry. I'm looking at it now, yeah, you do.
And that that would, again, we'll have to talk to Pico about that, that's the reason why we have not gonna coordinate with that, because Pico typically don't like any kind of underground facilities on their property, so we'll we'll kinda coordinate, we'll certainly.
There's exceptions, though. They do, there have been exceptions in Newtown, so.
Okay, we'll certainly try.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask one other question? Um, because the your fifty two employees, are they employees or the independent contractors?
Montu or Sergeant, you wanna? You're both on mute, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I did not come and clue clue, I couldn't hear that.
They are employees.
That's good, all right. I know that Georgia is a open shop state. Um, have you dealt dealt with um, uh, labor organizing, uh, and and any of your facilities there?
No, we haven't.
Are you prepared to deal with that here?
Yes, if we need to.
Okay. And what is the, what is the, what is the monthly cost, the range of monthly cost for a resident there?
In Georgia or in this?
No, here.
What what would it be here? Uh, five thousand dollars approximately, depending upon the level of care, it can go up or down.
Right, it would probably would be more expensive for the 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 memory care?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I just have a a couple more questions, um. In the evening, how how well lit will this property be and uh, how how will, being that, how will you keep the ambient lighting from shining onto uh, the bypass?
Um, certainly that's gonna be part of our land development submission, I'm sure there are, uh, I don't know that they've yet been designed or or measured, but we're obviously aware of the illumination standards that the township ordinances require, and we'd certainly uh, at a minimum comply with those, and if need be, uh, that we need to add some additional shutters or shades to uh, reflect any additional glare uh, from the bypass, and that's that's certainly uh, something we have no problem doing, but uh, the lighting plan uh, has not been designed, but we recognize there are, you know, illumination spillage requirements, and there's no expectation that we wouldn't be able to comply with those.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm also asking again is that you're possibly gonna have a twenty four hour operation right next to you. Uh, again, from a safety aspect, um, you want to keep it well lit so that uh, people do not wander again off the beaten path path path, and may shoot down your driveway by mistake as they're coming out of whatever may be there. So I'm just, uh, you know, just curious, says again to the safety of the of the residents and uh, particularly in in the evening, the safety of of the workers that may be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, just one final question, um, where is your main corporate office?
Lotus Park, we're out of Alfreda, Georgia. I live in New Hope, Pennsylvania.
Will you be the onsite person?
Yeah. Yes, I will be.
Um, doctor, will I be an onsite doctor?
No.
On call? No, okay.
So you're visiting doctors, what we have, and uh, visiting sometimes a dentist as well, uh, podiatrist, different. specialties.
Okay.
Doctor on call, but not one that's stationed there.
Okay, so there's not one that may show up uh, every other day just to make rounds or check on patients, things like that?
So this is not a nursing home?
Okay. They're they're elderly, I would think, uh, you know, they're susceptible to sickness. Uh, so they would have to wait for a doctor to to come in? Or is there, again, a doctor doesn't show up every couple days, anything like that?
So we we do work with a doctor, uh, that comes and visits the community, but it's certainly not every other day.
Who does that doctor work for?
Uh, that doctor works for the residents, and we coordinate with the residents to use a doctor. Um, that doctor then uh, comes to the community once um, every other week, and it could be as much as once a week, uh, but it's certainly not every other day, and should a resident require a visit to a doctor, we bring them in our shuttle to the doctor uh, that they need, and um, many times it's not a doctor like a primary care physician, but it's a very particular type of a doctor, and we take them to those appointments.
And they, can they request their own doctor?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Uh, final question is, um, again, and I'm just going based experience, my mother was in uh, one of these facilities, and then she, you know, progressed, you know, regressed to, um, and I found them to be, I'm sure yours won't be, but I found them to be a nightmare. And the nightmare being that the doctors do show up, but when you want to access that doctor, you can never find that doctor. Uh, usually they worked for the facility, so they really didn't care if they were there or not there. My question is, who monitors or audits or enforces what you people do in regards to, like, is there a state organization, is there something that um, a federal organization that monitors these facilities that would come out, like, like, I mean, if my mother was there and I saw something bad, uh, who would I call? And honestly, you could say to call you, but I wouldn't call you because you have a vested interest. Who would I call to legally come out and look to see if you were doing a good job?
Sure, so you would call the Department of Health, and assisted living uh, license, which this community would be issued, is regulated under the state of Pennsylvania. And if there's a complaint, you would file it with the state through the Department of Health.
Okay.
And and Human Services, sorry.
Very good. That's all I have. Any any second round, anybody have any further questions from the board? Does anyone from the public have any questions? You raise your hand. Oh, Dennis, go ahead.
Real quick, um, I'm assuming that a tra- some kind of traffic study will be done to, I I know Mr. Blackburn said, uh, I didn't expect uh, a whole lot of traffic, but there'd be holidays and special days where the visiting would be uh, at at an increase. So I um, was wondering, you know, what, how we're gonna gauge that, the impact of traffic?
Yeah, I mean, we have enough, I think, empirical data from the other sites and can do a little, uh, you know, traffic impact assessment to, you know, unfortunately, I I've done enough of these projects that I hear the same uh, unfortunate response to that very question, which is that even on those holidays, you know, unfortunately, you typically don't see a great influx of of people, uh, which is unfortunate, but um, to answer your question, yes, we can, we can do um, the necessary studies to provide the data that, you know, supports uh, our our suggestion that the the parking will be more than ample, yeah.
I heard you say traffic assessment, and that's like a step.
It's like a traffic study light, uh, traffic impact assessment, so uh, I don't believe a a full traffic impact study is required under the ordinance, so that would be, you know, we could certainly do a TIA um, pretty easily, I would think, so.
Okay.
John D. April?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello, um. You know, I used to work for uh, Chandler Hall a few years back, and uh, uh, there's a need for those places, there's a lot of them in the area, maybe not in Newtown, but there are a lot in the area. Uh, they're saying Chandler Hall didn't have memory care, well, to you, when I was there, they had memory care, they used to advertise it all the time. I used to see their ads a lot of times, uh, and uh, and laugh at them sometimes, go see, they uh, you know, things they didn't do, and and um, you know, y- your main thing is um, emergency services. You know, these are all old people, and a lot of times, uh, you know, using memory care and stuff, they don't think straight, and they imagine pains and stuff like that, and they say, hey, I wanna go to see the doctor, I wanna go to the hospital, and they'll call the ambulance. The ambulance will come over and, you know, new in Newtown, you see they're escorted with with the police car, or if the police aren't available, they come with a fire truck, sometimes the ladder truck. Yeah, that's a lot of, you know, fuel, a lot of gas, they charge them and all that stuff, but I, you know, that's kinda, kinda ridiculous. Uh, you're, if they come with the ladder truck and has to go through the parking lot, if if they build wah wah, they're gonna have to go through the parking lot. I mean, that's kinda silly, too. Um, as far as the doctors, Chandler had a doctor, um, he he was, he was on call. Uh, he seen him at least once a week, he was there, uh, because, you know, they're old people, it's Medicare, they want the money. The um, you know, assisted living, they had everything at Chandler, they had assisted living, they even had daycare, which I don't know if they have anymore, I, you know, it's I don't work there any longer, but that was part of my job, I was shovel driver. I just take them to the doctor's appointments, uh, pick them up from doctor's points, pick them up from the hospital. Uh, like I said, there's a lot of need for these things in the area, um, mainly because the relatives, the 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 children, whatever, they don't want to take care of the parent, or they can't take care of the parent. So they're dumping them, they're actually dumping them off, and uh, i- it's a shame. Uh, you know, naturally, they're old, they don't last long, clientele's always changing. Uh, as far as uh, you know, employees, uh, Chandler had some RNs. All the ones were less, they even had people with hardly any medical training at all, they call care partnership. You know, if one called that sick, they might not replace them, so they have, you know, uh, whether the rate, what the ratio was, one to eight, one to ten, I don't know what it was, but uh, you know, if one called out, they had a hard time hiring people, whether it was because of the salary or what, but a lot of people don't like that work with some of the things I mentioned before, the people are old, they don't last long there. But the emergency service thing is, I mean, that's a big thing, that's a big thing. Um, you know, um, Chandler also had hospice, is this place gonna have hospice? Yeah, the state, the state takes care of the nursing homes and the uh, old, the old homes like this, but uh, they're hardly ever around, and somehow, they always knew when they were coming. So they would, you know, brush up, they'd make everything look nice, because they knew they were coming. You know, that's about it, I mean, you you guys know me, you could talk to me, all that stuff, but like I said, there is a need for these things, the people are getting older, and a lot of the people, they want to dump their, one of your ex supervisors, in fact, that's one of the reasons why they left, uh, mother-in-law used to be in Chandler, and that's one of the reasons why I left her alone, because they haven't wanted to deal with mom all the time. So, uh, that's about it, let's somebody else though, thanks.
Anyone else in the public have a question or comment? Okay, seeing none. Uh, thank you, gentlemen, for coming out tonight and uh, answering some of our questions and I guess, uh, Mr. Blackburn, where do we proceed from here?
Well, I think we've got some uh, good feedback from the board, uh, certainly gonna look into that uh, sewer connection possibility. Uh, that one, that would have the added benefit of, you know, eliminating a couple items of relief as well, so certainly worth exploring um, a little further, but uh, unless, a- and and, you know, we heard all the other concerns, I I from our side of the table, I don't think there's anything that we heard tonight that we don't think uh, it, we're able to work through. Um, and, you know, I think our our perspective would be, or our our preference would be to probably uh, go back to task and prepare formal land development plans for submission. Um, unless, you know, there's anybody here who says that, you know, that they think the concerns that have been discussed tonight are such that the project is unapprovable in in any potential capacity. Um, I didn't necessarily hear that, but maybe I'm listening with, uh, listening to what I want to hear, so uh, I'll, unless that's the case, you know, i- if that's the case, you know, please tell us now, we can, you know, save everybody a lot of heartache and and time, so.
Mr. Blackburn, I'd like to see more of an economic uh, impact before I decide if that is something we should move forward with, on my end, I don't know about anyone else, but.
Yep, that, the traffic, um, certainly, yeah, we, I was taking notes, so all that stuff, and look, they're gonna have to go back and say, are we prepared to put all this together? My guess is that they have confidence in the project, such that, you know, these things are are reasonable requests, and I would expect them to be, you know, um, easily put together, not easily, but willingly put together and um, that that wouldn't be a problem.
Mr. Chandler, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Can you just tell me what the procedure is here, and how does the board be involved with this down the road? Is this lead to some kind of a hearing like we have with wah wah, for example, or is it just the zoning hearing board?
Or is it just the zoning hearing board? How does this get to go forward?
Well, I think Mr. Blackburn will go back to his clients with all the information he's gathered tonight. And they will determine whether they want to move ahead or not move ahead. I mean, we're not going to give them that inclination tonight. And then it'll go through the process. I guess you're going, going to go to the planning commission. And I don't know if any, does anybody go to the parking wrecks board nowadays? Or that used to be part of the, part of the system also? And get their feedback from them, and then they'll come to the board of supervisors again to get our feedback. And that's when we'll, you know, let them know what we like and don't like with the plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, there will be, yeah, to Mr. Schakman's point, there will be, my, my, my expectation will be that they, if they choose to move forward, our next step will be to prepare a zoning hearing board application, seeking the relief that we've identified as necessary, confirmed with, with Michelle's review. That would, in the normal course, that application itself would go to the planning commission, then to you, to determine if you would like to take a position, and then to the zoning hearing board. And then if and when that relief is secured, we would proceed with the formal land development plans, which again, will go back to the planning commission, then back to you. So this will be before, well, this will be before you again in some fashion or another. And at least two times if we get, before we get to the end of the road, so.
But the ultimate decision is going to be by the zoning hearing board to allow all the variances, is that correct?
The, that, yes, with respect to the zoning relief, that is the purview of the zoning hearing board. With respect to, this would obviously be a land development, which is the purview of this board. There are two separate applications.
Well, land development is just something we could suggest, but we can't, you know, enforce, basically. Is that correct?
I'll defer to your solicitor. My answer to that is obviously no. It's not a suggestion. You have the sole purview to deny or approve land developments. But I mean, that's, it's one thing for me to say, it's one thing for your solicitor to tell you.
Well, Jerry, yeah, Jerry, go ahead, you.
Yeah, certainly, if there's a disagreement as to what was required to be approved for land development, it's going to go, you know, to the zoning hearing board. Depending on the decision there, one side or the other will take an appeal to the court of common pleas. And they go through the whole process. We have a lot of experience with those kinds of appeals, and I don't need to mention names to tell you what they are. But these kinds of things don't end quickly if there's a disagreement. And the, and the litigation involved can take as long as the initial application process. So it's, it's drawn out.
I'm not saying I want litigation, I'm just trying to understand the process. And there are many steps, and there are many places at which the public can have more input, I guess. So thank you.
Of course, yeah.
Okay, no other further questions?
Just again, yeah.
Good, write down my question about the EIT.
The E, the, the EIT and the TIA, and some other letters, too. I wrote them all down, don't worry.
Thank you.
Yep. Great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
You, too. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Newtown Finance Committee Report. I see we have the chairwoman here, Shelley. It's, you're up, your turn. Just unmute yourself.
There we go.
Okay, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you for the chance to be here tonight and talk to you. And hopefully, we can discuss going forward plans. I think Dennis wanted to say a couple of things. He's our liaison to the committee.
Thank you, Shelley. Yeah, I want to thank the board for having us come before you this evening as well, having come before us. We've been trying to get on a committee for, on an agenda for two or three months. And in the meantime, we've, the committee's changed. We have some new, new folks on the committee. We have some, a couple, a new, a new approach to this. So if you went back to our December minutes, you'd see a recommendation that the finance committee put together. In my opinion, in my humble opinion, the, what you have before you tonight is essentially that recommendation with some, some modifications. I guess with that, I'd turn it over to Shelley, to Mrs. Holland. And, yeah, maybe my suggestion was that we go, there's three, three items. And maybe we go one at a time, and Ms. Holland can make a presentation of each one of those items, and then the board could ask some questions.
And just to, just to let everybody know, there will be no decisions made on this tonight. We're just taking this in for informational purposes. Okay, Shelley, you're up.
Thank you. One of the things that the committee, I've been only on it for two years, has grappled with is to, is the communication between the board and the committee itself, and to seeing some direction, and knowing how we can be supportive of the board of supervisors. And I thought it was surprising that the committee doesn't get routine reports that come to it. We have to go ferret out that information on our own. And if it's not posted to the website, we don't get it. And it's frankly somewhat difficult to even find it on the website. And I didn't know if that was a product that, for so long, there wasn't a finance director who could work on these issues, but we now have one. So one of the things that I would hope we can agree to at some point in time that I would like the board's support to do would be to have the treasures report, Dennis has sent it to us, forwarded to the committee to create that linkage, to create that relationship between the administration and the committee itself. So we're not out there kind of hanging around on our own. And next would be to have the finance director meet with the committee on a quarterly basis. I think we can all read the treasures reports, and I've scoured the website enough to find out where the bills are now. But to come and talk to us about what is happening and gain some personal insight as to where she sees things going and where she may believe we can be of help. There's a vast amount of talent on this committee and commitment to supervisors and to the community that we think we can be helpful if we know ahead of time what, what's happening and areas that she may believe, supervisors may believe need to have some attention. So that, in my mind, and I think there's some members of our committee that are on, I see Vince, and I think Matt was on here.
I hate to interrupt, but some people have their, their mics on, and I hear a background noise. If everybody can just mute themselves, that'd be great. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, we do, you know, so to sum up item one and open it up for discussion, because I really would enjoy hearing from the supervisors, what they see our roles and responsibilities being to them, how we can be supportive of you. And we can take that back to the committee we meet on March 23rd and talk about how we can address those issues. Everybody understand line one, or item one here, what we're trying to achieve.
Jerry, do you have a microphone open somewhere?
Is your phone, your phone mic open? Because there's, it's not muted.
For me?
Sounds like a, like a heartbeat. Or a clock, sounds like a clock ticking. No, okay. I'll, I'll ask Micah in regards to getting reports to the finance committee. I know there are some reports that we, we can't give ahead of time, but what Shelley is requesting, is that something that we can get, get to her so that she could filter it to the committee? So they have something to look at in regards to our finances?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, the easiest thing to do would be when we send out the treasures report to the board. We'll just put Ms. Holland on it as well. And that way, she'll have it in real time when the board gets it.
Okay, great. I guess the other thing was, Shelley, a communication with the finance director. I don't, I don't perceive that to be any problem, do you? I mean, but I, I, do you, do you want, Shelley, do you want the finance director to show up at your meeting? Well, meetings are Zoom now, so, you know, would she be able to do that, Micah, if requested?
Yeah, I've already, I've already spoken to Ms. Helper about it, and she's more than willing to attend a meeting, provided there's something relevant to discuss. So I think quarterly updates of the, the status of the finances related to the budget, I think is certainly a topic that can be discussed on a quarterly basis. And she's more than willing to do that.
Okay, those are, those are two points. What, what other points did you have, Shelley?
All of you, how you could take this town, what do you expect back from us? And that kind of gets us to discussing the budgeting process and how you see us being involved in that. And I know there's been a lot of consternation last year about feeling somewhat left out of the entire process. But we would like to participate as the budget gets developed to be supportive of the board and then to Mike and the finance director. So that we, and part of that is also using the finance committee as a public information, public awareness as to what is happening, what's going on, and to know that you've had a group of citizens that have participated in that process.
Yeah, I, my, my suggestion would be getting the treasurer's reports and, and again, meeting with the finance director. I would, I would continue to monitor our spending, our revenues, until we get to that budget, budgetary process, which is probably around the end of September, beginning of October. Micah, I'll let you, I know you, you have the calendar there for the budget, but.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, typically, the way the budgeting process works is a manager presents the budget to the board at the work session in October. And that is a public meeting, and anybody's allowed to attend. From that point, typically, the board takes that presentation and, and discusses it at future meetings. If the board wants to make that document public, it may do so. Otherwise, the, the manager's budget remains a non-public document until the preliminary budget's hung, whenever the board were to act on that. At that point, it becomes a public document, it's open to anybody's review and interpretation.
Can I make an inquiry, a suggestion? I think, having this finance committee, I mean, I think they're asking whether they can get involved much earlier than October. And I found it, you know, difficult to get presented with such a complicated document in October, when there's just a few meetings for us to go over the budget. I mean, by the time it gets to us, it's already been discussed a whole lot. And, you know, I think the finance committee would, would benefit us to have the finance committee sort of involved with the, with the process before then. I, I just don't know how that could happen. But there are things to discuss and planning what you want to do for the next year. Where are you going to get the money from? I mean, it can be, you know, not the detailed budget, but, you know, some ideas about what we need and to be financially viable. And, and, you know, so I'm just trying to think how they can get involved earlier in the process.
I have two suggestions. One is, I think, once we start meeting with the finance director, we'll establish that relationship so that when second quarter, even first quarter, but second quarter especially, results start coming in, there's, you, you start to get a feel for a budget process at that point. And so I think that, that relationship, that, that ability to discuss with the finance director will, will help shake some of that out. And the second point I wanted to make was, last year was, I, 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 I would hope, I've done one or two budget cycles now, two or three. Last year was an aberration on a number of levels. You had the, you had the pandemic that shifted things out. You had ESI, we were kind of waiting for an ESI report to help base some of our projections. And, and the tax increase. So, I mean, all those things kind of worked us at a disadvantage, in my opinion. And, you know, I think, like I say, just, just starting to meet with the finance director will shake a lot of those things out.
Anyone else?
Those conversations that go with the finance director and getting the treasures report. Please, that's not in that knowledge base, that is, you know, face alone. You're able to.
Shelley, your audio is still.
I, I can't hear at all.
Yeah.
No.
Hello?
Yes.
Mary, I have nothing that Ms. Allen said.
Oh, wow, okay.
I could not hear her, but I heard Dennis speak just now, and then that's all I heard.
Okay. Another setup, I think.
Okay.
She has earbuds, yeah, there she goes, maybe that'll be better.
Okay, I'll take my hand down.
Okay.
Okay, good.
No, yes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, much better.
That's all you need.
Okay, great. I'm a high-tech kind of person. I just wanted to underscore what Dennis had said, that as long, when we create a connection, that we're getting information monthly, quarterly meeting with the finance director, and we meet each other monthly, the committee, that it's much easier to see what may be coming at us that we need to be concerned about. So I think that this year, to get that implemented, gets us where in the direction we want to be going in.
David, you have anything you want to add to it?
Have we talked about the potential grant opportunities? That's something that we wanted to work on.
We didn't touch on that. And I think that, and that, again, is a connection back to the finance director that as some of the new information comes out of the census, and we've made some connections to the state to see what might be coming out of the state budget. As far as grants, we've talked to some representatives of PICO to know what maybe is that they can provide for lighting or economic development. I mean, so we've had these conversations, and the connection in my mind goes back to the finance commit person to have, to see where we follow up and how we best take advantage of those opportunities. So we will be exploring potential revenue sources.
I, I think that's a great idea, Ms. Holland. I enjoyed everything you presented in terms of having more individuals, especially residents, involved in the process. It's important, I think it provides us with a level of transparency that sometimes, not to say that we're not trying to be transparent, but some may have questions about that. I, I also like the fact that, you know, you're going to be able to put a little bit more emphasis on finding different revenue sources, i.e. grants. I think that there's a lot of grants that we can find that will be coming down shortly, that will be helpful in terms of if there are any gaps that we need to fill based upon our potential. That will be helpful in terms of if there are any gaps that we need to fill based upon our potential budgetary challenges, maybe, not sure. But at least we know we have things that we can fall back on and that's very helpful to our our folks in the township building as well. So I think this is a team effort. You know, people that work for the township, but people who also live here, I think that's a great way to build a great team. So I'm all for it.
Thank you. Thank you. Eighty percent of that budget is already contracted for. So it isn't like we're going to go out and find a vast, you know, just a huge grant somewhere. But I think if we can start looking at areas of smaller things that we can afford to. To purchase through a grant or and one of them that I would like to talk about is the website. I'd like to put out a lot more information on the finance committee section of the website as to what was what's happening, who we are, what we do. And in talking in terms of the economic development, how we can be supportive and I've had some conversations with George about this. As to this perspective for the township, I think the website becomes a huge marketing tool. Can't hear me? Did you lose me again?
We I can hear you.
Okay. Jerry had his fingers in his ears. That.
I couldn't hear you for a second there.
Okay. That the perspective becomes something I think the finance committee can work with in the economic development committee. And that the best place to and the most, the cheapest way, and I don't mean that to do it cheaply, but the most cost-effective way. Would be to do it digitally on the the website. And I would like to pursue that and to see how far we can get with that. Comments?
Any comments, questions?
Well, I fully support the use of the website, of course, and I know we have a technology communications. Committee, which is near being able to be formed because we have four people. And, you know, so if there's somebody perhaps on the Finance Committee. Who would like to be on the Technology and Communications Committee, who is technically savvy. I think you can be on two two committees. It's not a problem. The Technology Committee won't meet as often as the Finance Committee, so. And we would probably continue to meet forever in Zoom because we are a technology.
That sounds like a good plan.
So think about that, you know, need to get that. Reinstituted that committee. Thank you.
Anyone else? David?
I was just going to say that revamping the website, you know, to also let a lot of residents know what's going on. Getting enough information would be perfect, especially from economic development committee perspective. I know that we'd like to share with the township. In greater detail of the work that we're doing and the mission and, you know, obviously trying to create a little bit more buzz to get more residents involved. So the website would be a great idea and if we can partner with the finance committee to work on maybe one page. Of some of of a way to tandem in tandem, that'd be great.
Mike, I guess.
Let's not, well, let's Kyle, you have anything to say? I know you're out there.
No, I don't. Thanks.
Okay, Dennis, anything further you want to add to?
I think I'm okay. I did want to, I don't know, were we going to go to number two and number three on the list? I know we've talked about, talking about the website kind of covers item number two about a digital prospectus. And developing information information materials to increase public awareness. Have we have we covered those sufficiently? I didn't want to look at number three, though.
Oh, let Shelley carry on. There's other things that you have there.
I I feel like we've covered number two. I think it's kind of the ball comes back to the finance committee as to fleshing that out and going back to the board with. Suggestions. Everybody agree with that? We're done with two. And three would be, as we look at the website. And what marketing info, what marketing campaign needs to happen for the township to track economic development, to retain and keep attract people. That whatever the grant and the effort that went into getting that grant, that that might be a potential way we spend. Any money coming out of PAD CED is to use it for the marketing and one would be to revamp the website, to do it substantially.
You know, my experience with websites and I've had numerous websites is that. What that's called is a pull technology. People have to decide to visit the website. Before they can actually see what's on the website. So you can load up a website with a lot of information and nobody will see it. Because they don't think of visiting the website or they get lost in the navigation, which is obviously very easy on our website, as you mentioned. It took you a long time before you found the bills list. I just recently found it myself a couple of weeks ago. And I've been on the website every day. I'm probably ninety percent of the visits to the website myself. So there's another technology called a push technology, which is like email and other things like that. And one of the things I had proposed a while ago was to have using texting and messaging through cellphone use. You might look into a grant to cover the expense of maintaining that kind of a push technology. Where the township can send out messages, you know, we have new information on the website, blah, blah, blah. Here's the link. And other kinds of messages. It costs some money per year to to get subscribed to a service like that. So I think that'd be a good candidate for, you know, a grant if we can find one.
I would agree. I would agree with that. And I think maybe the best way to the the term would be we should look at a digital strategy. For the township that makes use of the website, Facebook, email. And, you know, potentially the video. I understand that, you know, that contract is being renewed. And to see how that could fit into the overall scheme of our strategy, our communication strategy. Agreed?
Well, with the case with the video, there's again where you can use some financial help. Because as I understand that the video cameras, say we go back to a meeting in the room live, we have video cameras in there. They're very low quality. The output of the video that we have on our websites archive of our meetings is very low quality. And compare to take a look at some other townships in our area. They have like high definition video. We have low definition video. Their sites also link the agenda with the videos. So if you click on an item in the agenda, you can jump to that specific part of the video. We don't have anything like that. And why? We don't have the money, I guess, for it. So that's another area to look into some kind of grants to to do that.
I think one of the things we were talking about was doing a phase two of the grant that we did. ESI's report was was phase one, doing a phase two with the Department of Community and Educational Economic Development. So.
Oh, please, I don't want to see those guys again. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Wouldn't necessarily be ESI, be another contractor that the decent that.
I don't like consultants at all, so forget about it as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, anyone else? Shelley, I I I'm sorry, are you finished or did you have?
I'm finished.
Okay, anyone else have anything to add? Thanks. I appreciate your report and we'll we'll have to schedule you on a regular basis, maybe once every couple of months. To bring us up to date also. So we have to know what's what's going on in the Finance Committee. Thank you. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll get into a session of public comment. Anyone have anything that they would like to discuss in public comment? Just raise your hand, I'll call on you. Okay, I don't see any hands. Old business, anyone have any old business to discuss? New business, any new business to discuss? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Dennis raises his hand, so moved. Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye. Good night, everyone. Peace.